Todd. Well, Todd is first. The way it's in there.
All right. Wanted to talk to everybody here about the petition back in March 12th meeting, I think it was. It's over like twenty-three. It's like twenty-five signatures and counting if we keep getting it signed. But we've been asking to see the treasurer. We've been asking to see her at the Board of Audits, she don't show up too. We've been asking to see the books, period, that you guys by law, by law are supposed to put in front of us at the next meeting. Or try to get them to us. All we've ever heard for the past two and a half years is Jan, Cheryl, and Bob Brewster saying that she don't have to show up, she works till six o'clock in the cities. But I've heard from other people, if you want to catch up with her, you can catch her at the Hillside Lounge over there in Wisconsin. You know, she comes up for the weekends. But I mean, bottom line, we still haven't seen no books. We still haven't seen nothing. All we hear is, is we don't have to give you nothing. Minnesota Township Association tells us, we don't have to give that to you. That is the best you guys can do for the past two and a half years? We haven't received one document we've ever requested because you guys are immune to data requests. And you know it. You stand behind the lawyers, you stand behind all this stuff. You brought this all upon yourselves now. I'm asking my fellow supervisors on the board and my board members here, enough is enough. I want to call for a special meeting for two different things, you know. Something else that I wanted to talk about beside this. We are so tired of asking for the simple, basic necessities that are not even here for us. And the books are front and center by law, you guys are supposed to show them to us. And we got Brewster saying it. Many times in our videos. Yeah, we're supposed to show you the book, we're supposed to show you the book. We ain't seen no books, so we don't want to see the books no more. We want an audit.
Hey Todd, if I could say-
We want a six-year audit is what we want.
They are supposed to be prominently displayed in the township, in Minnesota, in the municipality. Those books that you're talking about are supposed to be prominently displayed-
Yes.
At a single location.
Yes.
So you are correct, yep. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
By law, by law, and you guys are totally, but just not giving us nothing. The only thing you bring up is Rupee, Curry Rupee and the Town Board Association of Minnesota, which is a nonprofit association possibly funded by Soros themselves. And they've been trying to take over these democratic states as best they can with their money. And they throw all this money at these lawyers, this pile of lawyers in the Minnesota Township Association that you guys rely on and you bring up and you throw them in their faces. Especially when we're talking about this lady Pamela Elwyn, our treasurer, never seen her, never, don't know her. We've been asking for it, so I'm just, I'm asking for my electors, elected, to make a motion for a special meeting to be held to look over our signed petition for this that was back in March 12th meeting, and we signed it, gave it to you. And that's when Cheryl said that we wanted to see the books. But I had to correct her on the minutes about that even, that we are no longer wanting to see the books. We want to see, we want an audit. We need somebody else in there because you guys, it's just so much funny business.
You gotta call a special meeting for that, Todd?
Yes, this has to be a special meeting called for this.
Okay.
Here's a sample document that is going to be submitted. And I'm just asking, you know, to, I just wanted, you know, make a motion, you know, we can talk about this a little more. But I don't want to ask no more. It's just, we're beyond asking, there's been people kicked out of here for that same reason for asking.
So Todd, can I ask you, so you're asking them to do what?
Make a motion for a special meeting.
Is that something where they have to vote on or something?
Yes, yes, so soon as I'm done talking, we can fill in the blanks here, how we feel about this or whatever. But then they can make a motion on this, on the special meeting to talk more about that audit right there.
But at the end of the day, it's going to take the supervisors to vote on just having the meeting, right?
They can vote on the special meeting. They can call a special meeting.
We have to.
But, I'm talking, I let you talk.
It's my document.
That's fine, I'm talking.
Do you know what's on that document?
I haven't seen it yet, no.
Well then why-
Let her explain.
I'm talking. We could call a special meeting, but it takes the people to call for his audit. There has to be, then it has to state, why, what you're looking for on the audit, why you want the audit. And also has to state that the people, have you, everybody here, has to pay for it.
That's too bad, so sad.
It doesn't-
Too bad, so sad. You did this to us, you did it to yourselves, and you should have brought the books at least. You had plenty of time, plenty of meetings to do this now. Don't sit here and say it costs money again. We don't even want to hear it. We don't want to see her. We want to see an audit now.
Do you know how much an audit is going to cost?
Can I please get that sheet back because she don't understand this here. Here's a simple document on how this runs. We have to call for a special meeting first. It's not up to you, Jan.
She didn't say that.
I didn't say it. I didn't say anything.
Okay, well-
She was just explaining the process.
I think she was saying that we had to have a special meeting.
It says it right there on that, on that thing right there. That's just a copy of what's going to come forward to this.
In order to call for an audit, it has to state on the audit to the, what exactly you're looking for, not just-
Well, hey, anything and everything, how about that?
No, that's not-
Well, we got-
No, Jan, because, no, 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 no. The cookbooks are supposed to be prominently displayed with receipts. That's the, that is the law. I don't care what the Township Association, what Bob says, that does not matter anymore.
Do you guys want to see the petition? A copy of the petition? And it's going to get bigger and bigger. It's on our website, it's on, you know, and you can download it, whatever you want to do with it.
So Brett, what do we do here now with what he said?
Well, first, I mean, like Jan was saying, there are three requirements that we're aware of. It has to specifically state that the township is accepting the cost of the audit, which we've heard just back of math to math is at least fifteen thousand dollars per year audit.
Fifteen thousand, yeah, fifteen.
Fifteen per year audit. So six years times fifteen is ninety thousand dollars. We don't have ninety thousand dollars in our bank account today, but that's not your, her, their.
So why ain't she here? Why, why, so you know what, now hold on here. I don't want that any more than that, I don't like them numbers neither now. And I'm going to tell you what, Jan, you did this with Bob Brewster and Cheryl right there. You created this whole situation, you can look mean mugging me as much as you want, lady, and I don't care. You did this. You did this, you disregarded our asking. We asked you politely, we asked you, screaming and kicking out the door with the sheriff's drag, this audit for Christ's sakes. You won't present the books, you won't do it. Cheryl, are you a treasurer and a clerk? Are you co-addict this, or how is this working? You agree with everything she says. Why ain't that lady here? Why? Honestly. Why does not Pamela come here with the books? Why not? She gets paid. We've been talking about this too much. Too long, and we're upset, I mean. We're going to figure something out here because we're not just going away just because it costs a lot of money. You guys just don't feel like showing it to us, we're not, you know, good enough for you. I don't know what this is. But what you did is wrong, Jan, and we've been asking for a long time, but you up there too Derrick, you know what's going on.
Yeah.
You guys know what's going on. The books are not here.
You won't stop talking long enough for me to say that I don't understand why we don't provide them.
Why?
Honestly, I don't under, I don't understand why we don't.
You're a supervisor.
Yeah, exactly.
Listen to what he's saying, Todd. You know, Brett, listen to what he's saying.
Okay, so no worries.
I didn't understand the issue the whole time. I never really got a clear explanation on why we don't.
Well, does she run the show right there, that lady right there, Jan Prophet, run this whole board here, you say?
No, but I'm one person.
No, I understand. Well, that's all, we need you. We need you now more than ever.
Todd, can you please lower your voice?
Yes, I will. You know what? You were even a supervisor when I was asking for this stuff. You did nothing about it neither. Not one thing.
You had much of a chance.
Well, we ain't got no chance.
May I speak for like one minute?
Yes.
I think that there might be steps that could be taken that will satisfy those who are disgruntled, but also not cost ninety thousand dollars. May I suggest that at the next annual meeting, which I attended with Wendy last time, we just be given a printout, a line item printout of the budget for the year, or the expenditures for the previous year. We didn't get that last time, and I'm surprised, but I'm not all up in arms, I'd just like to see that. I think providing people with a copy of the agenda for the meeting along with an appended list of, you know, of the auditors report, a line item expenditure list, is that possible? Is that something could be done? It wouldn't cost any more than that.
It wouldn't cost anything, no. We have neighboring townships that put this information on our website, we've got other townships that put it on their bulletin boards.
These guys all, these guys won't do that at all, they're fighters.
Well, it's just like what you said earlier, Curry and Ruby, it's like also five hundred bucks is spent on Curry and Ruby.
My idea, my idea is, oh, I'd like to hear Jan, is that a possibility?
Okay. Todd, now you've got copies of the audits from the state. You got, you told me you-
I don't have audits from the state, I just got the money in and out from, I think all the way up to two thousand eighteen, or two thousand two, two thousand eighteen. As far as they gave me right now. All the rest of it's, you know, it's not published yet on the state's website.
So it only goes to two thousand eighteen?
Something like that, that's as far as I got with that. We're looking for twenty-one to now with all the big expenditures on David Hughes's property with the lawyer's expenditures, the cleanup expenditures, the twenty-some thousand dollars down here at Claudia's house expenditures. All the expenditures on, 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 on-
Birdie.
Birdie? Yeah, we could go on and on, and we're heading up to down here with the Ericksons here. Now, and it's all in one little area, all this happened in a short amount of time. We'll pick a year or two here, we're going to figure something out here. There's no excuse for what you guys are doing to us. None. Now it's all funny, right, Jan?
No, it's not funny.
This is real funny, Jan.
What you think we are doing? We're doing-
You're not showing us the books. Where's our books and where's our treasurer?
I own my house and land, and you guys spent forty thousand dollars on my equity. I didn't give you permission to spend my money. Period. Forty-eight grand is on my taxes right now. I'm pissed off.
But that's not your fault.
Yeah, it is your fault.
No, it's not.
It is.
You have, you have-
It's all your fault.
No matter what I say, that's what you're going to say anyhow, so I-
You were privileged here though.
But let him have some time to think about it.
Yeah.
But not the cookbook thing, that's got to happen right away. So whatever, that never got finished up.
It never got finished up either.
So what are you guys going to do about that? Do I have a meeting? What is it?
I think it was at the resolution for a meeting, for the open meeting. Open meeting.
What was, what was thought about with Stephen said?
Well, it was dropped, I don't- I haven't heard anything about it.
Well, no, it's great what you've been saying, but the bottom line is, is that we've got to get, you know, something's got to have, have to happen because it's Todd's right. I've been coming here for, you know what, it's kind of funny, I've been to more zoning meetings and more town hall meetings and everybody except for Ms. Wickham up there, she's at all of them too. But, you know what, since I got involved, we've been asking for the same thing, it's, you know, it's D-Day, you know. Provide the cookbooks. Well, I think what Todd's saying is it's past providing the cookbook, we just plain simply want an audit. And what that means is that everybody that got paid, you don't have to have their names, you don't have to have their social security numbers, but you can have A, B, C, D, E, got paid this much money, duh, 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 and this is how much the road grader costs, duh, duh. You know, it's called, it's called a budget, it's called receipts. What are we, what do you guys do for us? And I'm not trying to be mean when I say that.
What I will add is I've got three agenda topical, five agenda topics myself tonight, three of them are cut all on this beam of transparency, basically. Should we have minutes uploaded on the website? Should we have agendas on the website? Should we have what's called a public packet on the website and accessible at each meeting? That's, I've got a whole page here that I'll get to if I'm able to, so.
I just have one thing if I may. It's-
Yeah, go ahead.
We've got a suggestion over here, we've got his agenda request. I see, we at least consider this. Because if you open it up to a meeting, it goes to a town vote, you may be spending a hundred grand. Congratulations, you own it. You do own this. You own it. Yes, but you've got to come to realization, there's a way around it to get it done without spending a hundred thousand dollars. Because you know where that money's coming from? Your pocket, it'll be on the taxes next year.
Well, I think that is-
I got a little HDB property.
It's got, it's got to include everything. It's got to include everything. How much Bob Brewster was paid, how much Curry and Ruby got, everything.
I'm not even talking about that.
And you don't have to have change, you just have to have all the stuff to spend.
I'm just saying, be careful of what you wish for because it's going to go on, and the way they're going to get the money is next year. Hey, we're out a hundred grand, we need that. The county's going to give it to us, we're going to spend it, it's going to come out of your pockets.
Well, you know what, well-
I'm just telling you.
Yeah, I agree, but you know what, I'm not going to blame anybody in this room.
I'm not trying to blame anybody.
I'll blame somebody that's not in this room tonight, that he's a big part of why we're at where we're at.
Which is why I'm sitting where I'm sitting.
Well, that's a long time coming.
I've been talking to the two of you, we're trying to make changes here. If we get a little help to make these changes, things would change. I've been telling you that for a year and a half. We've been asking for two years for these books, I don't want to hear it from you. What are you, what are you, what are you going to tell me about audits here? You don't want to listen to anything. No, hey, you know what? You guys don't want to give me anything.
Hey, hey, that's enough.
You don't want to give us anything, we can't, by law, you're supposed, you broke the law by not even showing us the box, period. Many times you broke the law.
All right, we've got over this, so I'm on the agenda request, but we got to finish, Todd, so what's the deal? You both done something, you call and put, I don't know what. Because I got to get my stuff done.
What do we even have in front of us to vote on?
Whether we're going to have a meeting-
Special meeting.
We're going to have an audit, the townspeople want an audit.
Can I say one thing about this answer?
Yeah.
This is just my opinion. If any of these people here have a question about the spending, there's nobody here that can answer it except her.
It's an audit.
Except Pam.
Oh, yes.
We've had that problem at the Board of Audit.
Okay, the, uh, uh. You want me to talk now? Has anybody here tried to get ahold of Pam? Called her? Because I've tried to call her several times. I can't get ahold of her. Never returns my calls. And if we have a question about what we're talking about right now, where this money going, or how it's being done, I basically think that she's got to be here to answer those questions.
I keep with Pam once a month. Go through all the works. We have to balance, mine has to agree with hers, everything we put together, you know. All the bills, everything. And, uh, so that's why I, according to everybody, she doesn't have to be in the meeting. She just has to do her job that way. And that's all she does, and that's all she gets paid.
Doesn't, doesn't go through the C test, which is a computer system that is automatically on, it's a different-
Yeah.
But I mean, I will say, I agree with you guys, why, why would you run for a position that you're not going to fully fulfill? I don't think she ran in this last game. Well, how'd she get elected?
Yeah, voted in.
Nobody ran again.
Bob Brewster threw in it. Yeah, so it works around here.
The thing is, I've been a member of the board for six months, I've never met her, I couldn't figure out the lineup.
She's probably running again.
And that's, that's fine.
I've heard she's not running again.
Yeah, that's what I-
Well, and well, you're going back to what you're saying, you know, Todd, what he's asking for is, I mean, because this is, why isn't she showed up?
Why haven't we been able to see the books? Why a minimum of that?
Only because of what the lawyer told us, you know, that's, I don't-
The town, the lawyers told you not to, not to show us the books?
Yep.
Yeah, yes.
So they told you to break the law and you did it?
Over and over again.
No, hold on. You, you, by law, you're supposed to show us them books when asked. So they told you, which one of them told you to break the law to do this? Township Association? Well, you know, if you, you know the law that you're supposed to present them books when asked. And then, but then, you guys broke law, and you listen to these, you know, the Township Association, non-funded, possibly profit, you know. They're, you know, funded by Soros. Don't give them nothing.
Let's be clear, it's funded by us.
No, well, no, not all, don't, don't, let's be clear, no, hey. I'll tell you what, I asked my question, I don't know.
I got one more question.
Crooks.
Cheryl pointed out that she doesn't have to be here. How many of you four don't have to be here?
No, we have to be here, the treasurer is the only one that doesn't have to be here.
If the township supervisor is not present for six months, they can have a replacement appointed.
How about the books when requested?
If they have to one meeting after that, the replacement's not there, the assumed.
How about the books when requested?
Well, but how about this one? You guys are supervisors, why don't you, right now, the three of you vote and say, we're going to have our treasurer come to a meeting? It's that simple?
I need you to clear this up.
Why don't you, why don't one of you guys propose that? Huh?
We can't force her to come.
You, you, wait a minute. You can't, you guys can't even get the treasurer to come?
We can't force her to.
We can't force her.
What, are we paying her?
We can't force her.
Are we paying her?
Well, of course.
We are, how much are we paying her a year?
Not that much, because she doesn't, she doesn't-
Well, how much she is paying?
Maybe three thousand, something like that.
Three grand? Three grand and never has to show up to one of these town board meetings? You guys, you guys, you guys don't get paid, you get paid three grand a year? You? You? None of you guys get paid three grand a year, she gets paid three grand a year, but she can't make it to one meeting?
With the books. With the books.
She does do the work. She does work. She does, she has, she has to go.
We're not denying whatever happens, you know, behind the scenes. We're, 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 we're talking about what happens here at the meetings when we're denied to even see the books that are simple, that are rights to see them books, and you denied us our rights. You have not the authority to even do that. Not one of you up there. That's why we're pushing this audit, we're pushing it. Well, we want to start seeing that, but how are we going to deal with this audit here? You don't give us even the books to look at. By law, you're supposed to. What are we going to do about this now?
According to the lawyers.
Yeah, talk to them, give them a call. They talk, they-
You know what we're supposed to do, right?
According to the lawyers? What are you supposed to be doing?
Well, here's, if I could interject, according to the lawyers isn't who you should be looking for the answers from. You should be asking the people that you govern or that you represent, what do you want, people? You don't go to the lawyers and say, what do we give them? Because it should be just total transparency, it should be like looking through a newly washed window.
How do, how do you set up? Are they going to print off what is?
Yeah, we can print off some stuff.
Print off my list.
Put it on the website. Throw it up there along with the minutes that you used to put up there, and then you took them away from us.
Don't say me, I damn not-
I'm just saying, somebody up there agreed to take away the minutes because they ain't been put back up.
That is not, it was just that somebody was going to do it.
I have access to it, but I, I don't get the minutes myself, so there's nothing I can update. Again, I'm not agenda items for the night.
No, I was sending it to Bob, and then Bob was putting it on there, and then he was going to send it to, okay. But Brett is now doing the website, okay. Right?
I am.
Okay, so Cheryl, you can send, you can send the minutes then to Brett? To Brett.
Are you the one that says that, or you got to vote on it? You're not the only one sitting there with the, you know, supervisor tag.
Brett can second you.
I, yeah, I guess, I mean, it's-
Well, I'm just saying, you know what I mean, you guys, you don't patrol more.
Brett, Eric, Derek is seconding that, so then Todd will, 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 we'll get the minutes into Brett and he will put them on the website.
Sounds good.
You're putting the website?
One, one is your song.
What's that?
I missed that.
You're going to put the minutes on the website.
That's what they're discussing, yes.
That's what they're going to-
That's already passed.
But we keep skipping over the audit thing, you know, you guys-
Cheryl, that's the next thing here, just listen up. Now, as far as where this all started and how it all came about, and the number of years that you're asking for, I'm not real sure how pertinent the past years really are. What you should be more concerned with is what's going on within the first, this year, not what's going, what's going on in the past.
Well, I need to know what happened during the last two years.
And so, you know, if there's a statement that, a monthly statement, when you guys meet, if there's a monthly statement that can explain more of the expenses that are being paid for, such as like the welder or whoever it is that you're paying a statement, a bill or an invoice to, then it would be easier just to go month by month instead of starting back in two thousand nineteen trying to verify what you did back then, or. You guys weren't even on the board.
Well, how about this one? It's real simple, you just take, you grab that paperwork that you talked about, that you go over with Pam Melwyn, you said you have, you sit down and we have a word document, whatever, I'm sure you've been doing that for years, you know. Supply that, because that should say everything, everything, all the expenditures. It should be real simple, just output it, off the copier.
And the things, the items-
Because if you're auditing it, you're using QuickBooks like you're saying, then that should be no problems, bang, I'll put it.
The items that legally, the items that legally cannot be shown, then that, that part, yes, you do not do, because you know for a fact that they shouldn't be. But basic expenditures for bills, gas, that kind of, well, that kind of thing, you should be able to show that.
Then I ask you-
I mean, I worked city, county, state, and we had to do that with our budgets.
Then what stuff wouldn't they be able to show?
Well, that's entirely-
Gross wages, social security number.
Right.
Personally identifiable information, essentially.
Right, but you can put the raw numbers up, right? Like I said, you don't have to have names, we just want A, B, C, D.
You can do raw numbers, you can do raw numbers, but you're not going to differentiate that Cheryl, Cheryl was paid this much or Julie was, or you were, or who else. But the general numbers like for wages, expenses for gasoline or travel, meals, whatever it is, yeah, you should be able to show basic information, or what Derek has done with the gravel or what's going on, you know.
And here's what, you know, here's where I'm with this, is that, you know, Bob, you know, I'm sorry, you know, I don't like bringing up boxing, but Bob made it a carriage, a cottage industry with him and his phone calls to Ruby. I mean, he was getting paid, I don't know, twenty bucks an hour, twenty, whatever it is. So all that time, and the reason it's got to this point, why people are so upset is, is that he's spending all this money, basically paying himself, this chatty cat on the phone with Curry and Ruby, trying to drum up some ordinance violation that he can chase after somebody about, and it just cost the township nothing but money. I mean, and I would be fine with not seeing the cookbooks from the past if we could at least say, going forward, we're going to be transparent as crystal clear as brand new glass.
Yeah.
But you know what? The reason you have to know about the history is because history has happened to repeat in itself. So knowing what's happened in the past will tell us what we don't do in the future, because I'm pretty sure that Bob Brewster made one hell of a lot of money sitting there for four years at that zoning administrative job, and he cost the township a bundle of money too.
I appreciate what you said, but these, this board can sit up there and they can determine what they want to do next. And if they decide that they are going to show certain information each month to satisfy the public, then that's what they vote on and that's what they do. And then you're going forward, you're not going backward anymore. We don't need to go backward.
All right, something that can settle a lot of this. The rumor is, and I've heard that Pat, or Pam is not going to be running again. Can the board go with the- And the board go with a resolution that requires the next treasurer at least quarterly in the meeting physically.
Not if she voted him. The only way they can do that is if she's appointed.
Well, then appoint somebody. Okay. I'm just kidding, but I'm just saying, I would, whoever takes the job is going to have to agree to show up at least quarterly to explain what the hell's going on.
Yeah.
That's up to.
It should be, that we should be able to do that.
It's up to who?
Yeah, it has to be decided. It could be decided at the end of the year.
Okay, that's what I'm saying, there's got to be some way to do it.
Yeah, but that could be done at the end of the year.
Perfect, they won't put it down, it's done.
Can be appointed.
Why, I mean, I can't believe we're even having this discussion about seeing the treasurer, what's that, are you kidding me? I mean, I, I know you guys are saying, okay, be wrong, but I don't think it's asking that much to have the treasurer show up. Come on, like ten minutes, you know, just, just to show us she's alive at least.
I, I think it should, every, every meeting, I wouldn't go every, uh.
I said a minimum.
All right.
Yeah, I mean, it's up to people, people do whatever, but yeah.
We all talked about keep moving forward. You guys have been violating our constitutional rights to them books for two years now by denying us access to see them. We can't move on from you guys, you guys broke law. You broke the basic fundamental laws and you did it because of your lawyers. Now, it's, it's on my videos here and I'm telling you right now, y'all said it. Now, and I'm telling you, you violated our rights when we asked for them books and you didn't present them or make any attempt to, to present them books, you broke the law.
Todd, we're trying to solve that right now.
Yes, we're working on solving it.
We're trying to solve it without a bunch of garbage going down. Can't you understand?
Where's my service?
It's simple.
No, I mean.
What we're trying to do here is to solve this and take care of it without having to go through some legal aspect to try to find out what's happened in the past. We are trying to take it forward from here.
I'm, I'm asking for the special meeting because we've been violated, we've asked for them, but we asked for it.
You know, there's a statement for that and I refuse to say it.
I think you're one person.
But that's you with blanking in the wind.
Okay, hey, I, these guys do a lot of blanking and looking at us, mean mugging us, you were up there, one of them doing that.
You've been blowing hot air for a long time, now straighten up.
I'm not blowing hot air, I am, I am, I am exercising my constitutional rights. I want to see the books. Want to see the books.
Hey, Todd.
For two years.
They're trying to show you, shut up.
They trying hard enough and you shut the fuck up.
Hey, that's enough, you get out now, there's not going to be that kind of language in this building. Oh, no.
She started, I'm not leaving, I'm done, you know what? She ain't telling me to shut up.
Absolutely.
You've done enough telling me to shut up last me a lifetime. You did this, lady, you did.
I'm, right now, this meeting is adjourned.
You want to go ahead and write me a couple of checks?
Why is it adjourned?
The meeting is because of you, because I'm not.
Because you guys denied us our fundamental rights to the books?
Goodbye.
I don't think that's right.
Motion.
Make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Meeting's adjourned.
Right on. Good job. Where's your buddy Brewster now? The one that, you know, pretty much walked you guys down this lane? Give them nothing.
No, that's why.
I still want my.